We've come out on top, right? We have worked together, we have been together, we have sacrificed together, and we have done good things for the district. So you may wonder why this thing, what's next, right? So who knows what's going on? So what's next? I need to set the stage because I really do believe that we have a problem. We have public education that needs to be addressed. And I want to set the stage to kind of at least set some guidelines and some perspectives that may be helpful in establishing this dialogue. Because ultimately, we're going to have to work together to preserve public education moving forward. So if you would, so what I did as well, you know, this isn't just, you know, random opinion. I have The Righteous Mind by Jonathan Haidt. Some of you may even read it with him. He's a psychologist. The Devil's Pleasure Palace by Michael Walsh. Not an academic study, but an excellent study on critical race theory and its origins. Got the Constitution. Have The Colleen of the American Mind, also by Jonathan Haidt and Gravesman Dionoff, talking about the issues that we confront today. All books I've read multiple times. I, you know, so I take my role on the board very seriously. I try to get up to speed. I, it's not just, you know, I see something on the internet and I say, oh, well, this is maybe it. This is substantial work. And so I come at it from a perspective. And then really, we have two different worldviews that are in play. So this is the Communist Manifesto, and this is the Bible. So let's go in order. So Jonathan Haidt is a PhD psychologist, and I'll try to put it in a nutshell because I don't want to take too much time, but all of this is going to be lengthy. What he did is he did research into moral values. And he was able to determine that there were six different domains of values. There's care-harm, fairness-cheating, liberty-oppression, loyalty-betrayal, authority-supervision, or excuse me, authority-subversion, and sanctity and degradation. So those are the six domains that are out there that he identified, again, a PhD, an expert, okay? And his hypothesis was that all political cultures and movements are based upon these. So there's a, this is a fairly long book. There's a lot of good detail in here. I encourage you all to maybe take a look at this or read about it. But one part of his experiment was this. He took 2,000 people and of mixed political views, left, independent, and conservative, and they were broken down, one-third into three different groups. So each group was equal in size. One-third of the time, they were asked to answer the questions asked themselves. So if you're on the right, here are the questions, and you answer as yourself. Same for independents and people on the left. One-third of the time, they're asked to answer as if they were the typical leftist. And one-third of the time, they were asked to answer if they were the typical conservative. So what were the results of that, right? Because it's a pretty interesting experiment. How do people, when they think about other people's perspective, what do they think? How accurate are they in understanding what other people believe? So who were the best at predicting how their political opposites would answer the survey? Conservatives and independents were consistently the best at predicting how people with other worldviews would answer the questions. Leftists were worse at predicting how people with other worldviews would answer. They assumed the worst about conservatives. What really is happening, these are, this is a poor, you know, I did the best I could, but this is a poor representation. This is a picture, you can't see it. I will give this to Mr. Flacco, you can put it online. But this is a representation of the typical liberal/ leftist matrix, all right? And the takeaway here is that liberals and leftists really only have three domains that they focus on: care-harm, liberty-oppression, and fairness. The other areas, the loyalty, the authority, the sanctity, not a part of their story. This is, and again, this is from the book. This is not my reconstruction. This is from the book. Conservatives have a moral basis in all of the areas. Conservatives understand fairness and harm, but they also understand authority, loyalty, and sanctity, as well as liberty. So right here, we have a problem, in my opinion. And that's why I think that we need to figure out how to work together to save, to save public education. Because a lot of the people, please, if I may, a lot of the people who are, we're all in this together, right? Everybody funds public education, whether you're left, independent, or right. And here we are in a situation where I don't think that everybody's hearing each other, right? And I think that, again, Jonathan Haidt, PhD, has pointed this out, that there's a problem, that certain characteristics of people are not listening to one another, okay? So here's why I think this next slide is important. And the next slide is a representation of the, this is from 2018, Democrat-to-Republican ratios by academic field, okay? And you wonder, so this, I think this is pretty descriptive. So it starts out with engineering, where there are 1.6 Democrats per Republican. It works its way down through chemistry and progressive order. History, 17 to 1. Biology, 20 to 1. You get down to sociology, 43, obviously 44, to 1. You get to anthropology and communications, there are literally no Republicans in this sample size. And so it doesn't have education in here as a academic field. I'm not sure why, but it doesn't. But if you average all these up, the average across all of them is 26.4 Democrats to 1 Republican, okay? So here's a quote from the study, and I've got the link here. "Indeed, faculty political affiliations at 39% of the colleges in my sample, which were top-tier liberal arts colleges, are Republican-free, having zero Republicans. The political registration in most of the remaining 61, with a few important exceptions, is slightly more than 0%, but nevertheless awkwardly skewed against Republican affiliation and in favor of Democrat affiliation. Thus, 78.2% of the academic departments in my sample have either zero Republicans or so few that makes no difference." We've got a problem. You may think that, you know, I'm some yokel sitting on the board, don't know what I'm talking about. This is a problem. This is, we don't have trust because we don't have inclusion, a word that is very popular these days. We don't have diversity of thought in education. That's a problem. We don't have diversity of engagement, and that is a problem. If you want to save public education, we need that. We need all sides at the table having a voice. So here's the next question. Can we save public education? I know you can't see this, but that's what it says. So I, as I said earlier, I am a product of Riverside Schools, graduated in '82. So believe it or not, back when Lammouth was called Auburn Road Junior High School, I was in a class, and I have no idea why this stuck with me. But as an aside, a teacher, just randomly, I can't remember the context of it, but kind of randomly put up a different diagram of politics, right? Most people think of the horizontal bar, right? The right on the right, the left on the left, and the middle in the middle. But he said, no, there are other people as well. It's a circle, right? It's a circle diagram. And you've got the totalitarian folks at the top, communists and fascists. You work your way down, I have done some things, but you work your way down to the realm where you can talk about a representative republic, which is what we live in, right? And how to gauge the, you know, where people are at on the spectrum, right? So again, I will make this available if anybody's interested. But here's what it looks like. I know it's a long, long distance view. But you may ask, you know, what are you doing, Tom? Putting communists and fascists together? Well, you know, communists and fascists actually have a whole lot in common. They believe in the state over the individual, no freedom of speech or thought, no freedom of religion, the god, the state is god, and ideology over truth. Are they different, right? They're not exactly the same, right? We had Nazis, we had fascists, although Stalin did sign the non-aggression pact with Stalin, or excuse me, with Hitler. So, you know, are they really that different? The difference between them is that fascists believe in the government singularity based on nationality or race. And the communists believe on getting there based on government utopia, the government utopia via class. So one is nation-based, nationality-based, or race-based, the other is class-based. That's the difference fundamentally between a communist and a fascist. So you go down below, so I do have the do-not-cross line, which I'll talk about in a minute. I have, again, just for descriptions, I have liberal over here and conservative over here. I had them both under the do-not-cross line. So why are liberals and conservatives together, right? We, you know, liberals and conservatives have hated each other for a long time, right? Think of all the races. Things have gotten worse, certainly, I think most of us would agree with that. But even think back to the 50s and the 60s and earlier times. There's always been tension between these two, and yet I have them both below the line. Why is that? Because frankly, liberals and conservatives have a whole lot in common. What they have in common is they believe in America, they believe in freedom of speech, the individual over the state, Judeo-Christian principles, objective truth, freedom of religion, and a blatant capitalism. So all those discussions that we had, all those loggerheads that we had, we still had fundamental agreement on what America was about and where we were headed as a country. We had different views on how to get there, but we were all together, right? So what are the differences? So obviously, we hated each other, right? You know, in a political sense. So what are the differences? So conservatives believe on getting to representative government, again, which is what we have, based on meritocracy and limited government power. And liberals believe in getting there based on government is a force for good and that equal opportunity is important. It's not that conservatives don't believe in equal opportunity, or that liberals don't believe in meritocracy, but it's what they believe the most, right? It's what they have most faith in. So that's the ranker. So what's the do-not-cross line? And I didn't describe this fully. So at the very bottom, so you have communists and fascists at the top. At the very bottom, you have a line that talks about libertarian, libertarian, extremely limited government. So they're definitely on the opposite end. And then the very bottom, you have anarchy, no government. So what's the do-not-cross line? The do-not-cross line is the line that you go over when you take away the fundamental principles that support a republic. You take away the common values, you take away the freedom of speech, you take away the freedom of religion, and you take away capitalism, you take away the individual. So that's the do-not-cross line. And that's something we're going to talk a little bit more about, or I'd like to talk a little bit more about, okay? So that takes us up to, you might be saying, well, what's this have to do with SEL? And that's a good question. So what does it have to do with SEL? SEL has positive things, right? We've heard, we've heard multiple teachers give positive reports about SEL. But I don't think that we are thinking about it in a critical enough light. Education is trending, right? So you can't just take a snapshot today and say, that's the way it's going to be 10 years from now. What's next? What's next with SEL? And you can find out a whole heck of a lot more, you can go to Marxist.org. I talked about information I sent to the board and to the members of the administration. I talked about, a lot about the books, I gave references. So you can smirk if you like, but you need to learn. You need to understand why people are going through.
Trust me, I know at least well people here, I have experienced.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm making a comment. I'm really, I'm really not interested right now in your comments. Talk to me afterwards, I might happen to address your questions.
We want to let, again, I have public comments time, so just to keep us on track. So we'll start.
So the bottom line is this, is that there's going to be a bait and switch. You talk about, you know, be nice, don't make fun of people. But this is, this is the problem, is that you're going to, the next switch is going to be, if you make fun of people who are LGBTQ, then you are unacceptable. They're going to shift the focus of the values and what they promote. And what, well, here's a reference. I have two things for you to ponder. This is from AEI, the American Enterprise Institute. And I will say this, you know, there is no literature from academia against SEL. In my view, the reason there is no literature against SEL is because you're in an echo chamber. There is no, there's no other opinion. You are in an echo chamber, and you are listening to one another, and you're not getting any other opinions. But here's from AEI. "Before 2020, SEL was a broadly bipartisan enterprise." What happened? Well, because in 2020, Castle infused SEL with CRT-aligned ideology. SEL 1.0, as we would call it, focused on morality-neutral student competencies such as self-awareness and self-management. Back in 2019, it struck me as an unsustainable enterprise, a morally free attempt at moral education. In 2020, those moral competencies became valuing with values derived from the left academic ideology, popularly known as CRT. Castle embraced this ideology shift under the name of transformative SEL. Okay? Now, you can discount this if you wish, because it's not quote-unquote academic. But I will tell you that you don't have, I don't believe that you have the tools to critically look at this, to critically think about what's going on with SEL. I agree that there are some positive aspects to SEL, because you've said it, you've experienced it. But it's never static. What's the next step? What's the next shoe to drop? This is the next shoe to drop. It's going to be, you can only be kind and nice and good if you frankly accept the CRT guidelines on morality, which are frankly based on ultimately the Marxist, the Communist manifesto. So next up, the other point I would make, I don't know how many of you are aware, but we currently have a stay. But the USDA, yes, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, has put out a decree basically that says that if you have money that you are getting for poor students to help feed them during classes, that if you want to maintain that, you will have gender-neutral bathrooms.
So I'm sorry, I just want to stop a second. Because again, our question today is, there's a lot of information, right? I understand.
You bet.
But our question today is about, what's the request to remove responsive classrooms? So I think we just need to stay focused on this.
So let me justify why I've gone on this path. It's because SEL may not be, you know, on the surface, they're not the issue. You need to go behind and look at what's going on. You can't take a snapshot. And I'm telling you that there are things coming down the pipe that are going to affect us. This is not a static situation, and there's a next step. So we need to be prepared. If we're going to be reasonable board members and do our job and be prepared for what's next, we need to understand that. This is critical information.
So I'm listening to all this, and you know, I'm not here to preach about morality or values. I'm not here to talk about Republican versus Democrat. I'm not here to talk about conservative versus liberal. Just people, just people who don't understand one another, who don't communicate, who are afraid to communicate because they don't, because they're not comfortable with it. And, you know, I've been through some trainings and listened to things, and fear is, in my opinion, is what prohibits change and creates strife. That the conversations that make you the most uncomfortable are probably the conversations that will create the most change. And while we may have some uncomfortable conversations, I think they're necessary, but change is good, and change is where we have been headed. And I'm proud of the change that we are making in our classrooms to make young people responsive to what it is that they will experience out in the real world. And I have a couple of other things. So like I said, I believe that uncomfortable conversations will drive change. I believe that the practice of inclusion is what makes people feel valued and that they're able to contribute. Thank goodness for our teachers who are doing that in their classrooms every single day. It just makes me really emotional, sorry. That the more you know about individuals, the more you break down the implicit bias and create equity in our society, which is so needed. It makes me sad that our society can't see that. And then, then one more thing, that not everyone is hearing one another. And then it means more to have open and honest communication. And that's why responsive classrooms absolutely necessary in our classrooms, in our jobs, in our world, everywhere, not just here. It's not about education, it's about society and how we work with one another.
Thank you for your comments. I'm glad we were having a discussion. But change, change is not necessarily good. Change is inevitable, progress is optional, right? Change, change is going to happen, but progress is not guaranteed. And I will tell you that if we get away from the founding principles of the United States, which is on the individual, we are, we are going to end up in tyranny, is where we're headed right now. So you talk about, again, Mrs. Krasinski, we need to expand the conversation. We've been waiting for a long time. What's next? So what happens if the stay goes away? Are we comfortable collectively with having non-gender-based bathrooms?
I would like to say, I think it was not what Phat said, not at all. I read it.
So there's a stay on it, and that, if you look at the article...
That was about the athletics.
If you look at it, there's a stay on it, and there was an article that described it as well, okay? So you're welcome to your own opinion, but what's going on? It's coming here. We have a district next door to us that has preferred pronouns, not required, but optional. Are we going to have transgender in sports? Do we believe? Are you feminists?
So I hope that we have a lot of tough conversations over the next few years, and I think we have to tackle each one of those as they come down the pipe. In my, in regards to responsive classroom, I did a lot of research myself. And the one thing I did ask for that I did not receive was what in that professional development specifically is bad? And I did not get a response for that. And I'm sorry, when I go and I hear the teachers telling me that it's working, their kids are engaged, that they're learning, and everything that I found on it, and I looked for nonpartisan, even though we're nonpartisan, I should not have to go and look liberal or concerned, I shouldn't have to do that. We're nonpartisan, we should be thinking that way, and we should be making sure that our kids are learning, all kids are learning. And I'm not seeing that. And I think the other things, as they come down, we'll have to talk about them. And it's going to be very difficult discussions. And just because the school next to us is having to do this, it doesn't mean it's going to come to us. It may, it may not, and I think we have to tackle them as they come.
Are we looking at shutting down this discussion right now, or are we looking to continue?
Well, I think in regards to this question that you asked us to remove responsive classroom professional development, I don't know. I'm personally, I think we keep it, I think we continue to do what we're doing, we're seeing positive results.
Right now, are we looking to further discussion and information, or are you looking to shut this down?
This work session was written in regards to responsive classroom, the specific question that you asked. If you want to bring up something under new business and start a different discussion, I think we do that.
I'm looking at talking about responsive classroom. I'm asking you, are you trying to shut that down right now?
No, I'm not. I'm just...
Okay, I have something on my hand. I thought you were interrupting, saying, okay, we need to stop.
Well, no, I'm saying that we're not talking about...
You want to address the question.
He asked me a question, so I'm responding to him. What I'm saying is we're not talking about the bathrooms or anything like that, we're talking about responsive classroom. I want to make sure that we have a chance to speak about that.
Okay, and so in the training manual, and I'm assuming the teachers went through the whole training manual, right? And there was a question asked at the last meeting that I couldn't get an answer to, and it was, what does as much as mean? Is it more than, less than, or equal to? And I think that's a pretty simple answer. As much as means equal to, right? I don't agree on that. So in the training, what it says is that they want the teachers to spend as much time on SEL as academics. Did you see that in the training?
That's what we're not doing. I mean, I stopped from allowing the response, please hold it.
Hold on, hold on, I'm not finished yet.
We asked a question.
And I'm not asking Dr. Malaver, I'm talking with the teachers right now. And so I'm making a statement, a question is in the middle of that statement, and maybe that question should just be looked at as rhetorical, okay? Instead of being interrupted. So as much as, and I just heard someone say, well, we're not doing that. Well, the training says you're to do that, the question is, why are you not doing that? And also, the training says that you, as much as, as much as you know your student, you are supposed to know the student's families. Have you gotten to know each of your student's families? The mother, the father, the brothers, the sister, the grandmother? And so have all the teachers gotten to know each of their student's families? Okay? So what I would suggest is that if there is a teacher or a few teachers that have done that, it's going to be the great minority, and that's not being done. Because it's my understanding, the teachers as a union have a contract, and at a certain time of the day, at the end of the day, they're done. And they're not required to go beyond that. Nothing can force them to do that, and it's a contract. So when is, when do you take the time to meet each of the student's families? Do you do that during the class day? Do you go to their homes? Do you invite them into the classrooms? Okay? And so are you leaving the school to go to their homes during the class day? And so how are you getting to know, because as much as is a very serious statement, okay? How are you getting to know each of your student's families as requested and required by the training in the training manual? Okay? So I'm just suggesting that there are things in there that are next to impossible to accomplish, okay? And that being said, the responsive classroom website will tell us very clearly, anyone that goes on there can see it, it's equity, 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 equity. I also asked a question at the last meeting, what is the definition of equity? And I didn't get an answer on that either, okay? Well, some people look at equity as equal opportunity. Well, that's not the truth, okay? Equity means that everyone has the same outcome, okay? And the goal of Marxism is to socialize the people, okay, and have equity. And what that means, just like in Shaker Heights, when they removed an AP math class this year because the lower students were not able to achieve the higher scores, they just removed the class altogether, okay? That means the upper-performing students do not have any longer opportunity to take that class. It was suggested to me by people that had no idea what they were talking about, that it was because Shaker Heights maybe didn't have the money or the teachers to do it. That is not the case, okay? And at Shaker Heights, and I can tell you, because we have a friend that has taught there for 20 years, the same thing happened over there with their riots program. It came in at a very low, innocent level, and now it's full-blown, and it's a major problem. It is so bad over there, the kids are basically running to the asylum. The fights, the violence, the disrespect for the teachers, and the teachers are not backed up by the administration to do anything about it. Okay? So it starts as a very innocent thing, and then it continues to grow and grow and grow. There's another facet to this, which is gathering information on everybody. And part of, part of the growth of the program, if you will, will be to gather information and have files on every student. Okay? So how do you create a file? Well, when the teachers are required to make notes, you're creating a file, okay? When those notes are done on computers, those computers aren't locked up to where only you see them. The people that own those computers actually sell that information in many cases, and sometimes even internationally, okay? So you might not be aware of that, but it's just like Facebook and Google. Okay? How do they make money? Well, they make money because we're the product. They sell our information to companies that want to sell things to us, but it's a whole other, whole other topic. Okay? So when we are creating information on students, it becomes a file which can follow them through their whole lives. That's dangerous, because it can harm those kids. It can harm them when they get older, especially if something is in there that someone wrote that's not favorable to that student, and somehow a potential employer gets a hold of that, it can be harmful. So anyway, when you're looking at what's best for the student, okay? Well, basically, reading, writing, and arithmetic, okay, is best for the student. And when we are saying we need to spend as much time on SEL as academics, we are taking time away from the three Rs, okay? In my mind, that's not healthy. In my mind, that's not healthy, that's very dangerous. And it's heading us in the wrong direction, especially since over the decades, the United States has gone down, 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 down compared to the world in testing, test scores, okay? And, so when we look at Riverside specifically, I'm the chair of the curriculum committee, and I'm looking to make some improvements, especially in the math area where we've declined some. And, so I'm looking at opportunities as to how we can do that, okay? But that's a very, very small area. If you look at it globally, we would like our scores to stop declining. Let's arrest that and start increasing those. Well, that means we need to spend more time on academics. So if we're spending the time on socializing the kids, we may believe that that makes some kids' lives better, and it very well may. But when you're looking at all of the students, we're not then giving the opportunity to all the students that should be available to them. And I also suggested, in the presentation to the curriculum committee, that teachers are not therapists. How many teachers have psychology degrees? Well, I would suggest that probably not very many, so then they're not qualified to be therapists. So as teachers become therapists and are writing therapeutical statements in a kid's file, a student's file, I think it becomes outside of what should be acceptable. I'm not gonna go to a carpenter to get my eyes fixed, okay? So, you know, we have general rules and guidelines, and we do hire people specifically with specific degrees to teach specific things. And I think that we're off on the wrong track when responsive classroom says that the teachers are supposed to be therapists. Another item that's in there, one of the items in the responsive classroom training is, and this again is a small item, but I'm just gonna put it out there. It says that if a student, a child is confused and doesn't know the answer, their training is that that student's supposed to figure it out themselves. It's right in the writing, and you may have seen it if you've gone through the whole training. So, I could talk for hours about this, but build your dialogue.
So can you tell me where in the book it says both of those things, as far as children being a therapist and if a kid doesn't know the answer?
Well, it's in the training book, you can find it.
I couldn't find it, and that's why I asked, so I've been through this multiple times.
It's not in that core, it's in the training manual.
Is there another manual, after the one?
Yes, there's a training manual.
So I just read my books, I think after tables, yes.
And while Superintendent Kalas is looking for that, what I would also suggest is this. I believe anytime we do something differently in the schools, we should be telling the parents. We're supposed to be an open society. I specifically asked, first, last year, I wasn't on the board then, but when the board purchased the product and the training occurred, parents were not notified. When the training had completed and the program implemented, parents were not notified. Today, parents have not been notified. Nobody, not one parent has been notified by email, by the superintendent. Therefore, I had asked Superintendent Kalas if he would notify all the parents that we have in the district brought in a social-emotional learning program called Responsive Classroom, and he said, "No, he would not do it." Why are we hiding the information from the parents?
Yeah, I don't think we're hiding it, I think we're having discussions about it, it's out here very open.
And so, did an email that went out to all the parents?
We never requested it, we've never done that, and we've never requested it.
It needs to be requested?
Well, we don't, we don't allow that, I mean, it's fragile.
When we bring in something new, and this is a maiden, I mean, this is $130,000, $140,000 we spent, that's a major change. We should be, well, let's go back to, let's go back to the bondletting vote. How many communications were sent from the school to all the parents?
So let's step back a second.
Was that requested by the parents to be done?
No, we, we as a board, so you are one of the responsive boards.
We as a board voted on that to send out all those communications?
We as a board, we, two, voted that we were gonna put it on the ballot, so we sent communications with information, that's-
Okay, but my question is, did we as a board request that the school sent out all these communications to the parents?
Yes, by vote of-
We did not have that.
By vote of the board, that was the implicit, you know, instruction is that they will do that.
Right, so following that thinking, when we've spent $130,000, $140,000 on something, it would be logical to go ahead and inform the parents?
But we've done many things like that through the years, we don't, we don't send out emails on everything we do. It's just that, it's-
And it's discussed here at the board table, so that was on the agenda, it's available to everybody, it's public record.
No one knows about it.
But, but my point is, it's here, we're not hiding it.
I'm gonna tell you, parents could not know about this. So if we as a board are operating that way, that it's available to people and it was discussed, I'm gonna tell you, there was not much discussion, it was a rubber stamp vote.
It was discussed in the curriculum committee, which you are now the chair of, and that's where new things should come in and be discussed.
President, last year, last year in April, when it was voted on to purchase the program, there was almost no discussion in the meeting, it was brought up as a line item and approved.
Because of how we-
The public would have no idea what it was.
Because of how we handle, we have committees, we have a committee chair, at that time it was, no, it was really, yeah. So Mr. Miley was a committee chair, Mr. Hack sat on it, it was a special committee meeting. The role of the committee is to bring that information back in with any concerns, anything we need to know about, so that we can have a discussion about it. So that's how it is done, it's how it's been done. If there's something with the committees and the way we operate, that's a whole nother discussion, but that's what we do.
Okay, so what you're saying is, it's not the school's responsibility, unless they're directed by the curriculum committee, not a board vote, but the curriculum committee to send out that communication.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
How do the communication get sent out?
What I am saying is, we have never sent any communication out about professional development at this time. Would anyone disagree with that? There was no request by the board saying, "Hey, we need to send a communication out," so the administration would not send a communication out, right? When the teachers sit down, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember sitting in an elementary classroom not too long ago, the teacher sits down and they tell us, "We're gonna do circle time, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, this is how our day is structured." So as a parent, I know how my day is structured. The things we're using, morning meeting, it's just like circle time, it's always been used.
Could you please explain that again? When the teacher says we're doing circle time, you know how your day is structured?
On, so, when as a parent, sorry, as a parent, when I would go in, full orientation to meet with a teacher, the first thing they do is they sit down and they tell us, "Here's how your child's day is gonna be structured, here's what your child's gonna be learning." Because this is only K through eight, so it's not high school, okay? That teacher tells us that. As a parent, if I'm concerned that my child's gonna participate in a morning meeting, that teacher somehow to greet somebody, teaches them how to say hello, teaches them how to have a discussion, I need to say something. And, so it is being discussed with parents.
Little portion of SEL and responsive classroom, we were talking about one small item. And so I'm talking about this local program of responsive classroom. And so all I'm saying is, as a board, our responsibility should be to inform the parents what we're doing in the district. And I'm saying we failed to do that. Can we now, as a board, agree to inform all the parents that we have a social-emotional learning program that we have brought in and has been implemented into the school program?
So we have social-emotional professional development, where teachers are using certain tools that help their classroom engage, right? I am not, I don't know at this point that there's a reason to send a broad communication firstly, I think it's-
So you're still denying?
I'm not denying anything, Mr. Fisher.
I mean, you don't want to send out a communication.
I'm all for it, there's a reason, as a parent in the district, I know where to stop, we cannot-
We talked about this before though, too, that we cannot get them this happy. We get and date our parents already with information all the time. And I'll tell you, I've been had an opportunity to talk about this, yeah, but Mr. Fisher said something that, about hiring professionals. We do hire professionals, we are teachers with degrees, we hire administrators with doctorates. They give us these recommendations based on years of training and years of education. My job, I work at Lake Erie College, but I'm not a, I'm not a faculty member. You work in the roofing industry, you work in, we all work in different worlds, it doesn't make us, like, I should note, you've made a decision on this. Dr. Malacher is our director of curriculum, we pay her as a director of curriculum, she has a doctorate. These people do this for the job, and they are telling us that it is hugely beneficial in their classroom. I would never take from that, ever. And I think the fact that we're sitting here and actually having to talk about it for this, oh, it's time already, is pretty ridiculous. And yes, when we talk about it, we're gonna end it, we talked about this, the reason we're doing this today was because once we come to a decision, we have to finish talking about it and say how we each feel about this, and it goes three, two, five, zero, four, one, whatever. We can't talk about this every single month, we cannot, because we are getting sidetracked with all the other really great things we should be working on, instead of allowing our teachers to do their job, and trust that they're doing their job, because that's what we hire them for. We hire them because they are professionals, these two are professionals.
I agree with that, but I'd also say this, that our job as a board is to be a sanity check, all right? And what do I mean by that? Would anybody in this room outsource whether or not we go to war to the Department of Defense? Would anybody, would anybody? No, of course not, you would have, you have, you have the politically elected body, the president, as commander in chief. It is not the military that decides when we go to war, he's a sanity check. Do we outsource policing? Do we let the police do whatever they want in order to protect us? The answer is no. They could, if they want security, they could put a checkpoint at every single intersection in Concord, or Paintsville, Talonship, or wherever. The point is, there is a check, there is a sanity check on everybody's domain. There needs to be a sanity check in education as well. And I know that many people are unhappy with what I have said, but I am telling you, we're going to save public education. You need to engage with people, you need to read things that you don't normally read. We need to, we need to come together. I was gonna suggest that, I want to save education, that's why I want to let me, of all the things that I have done for the district, my history with the district, my commitment to the success of Riverside, right? I think The Coddling of the American Mind would be a great book for us to commonly read and understand what's going on. Because there's a lot of things going on that frankly, social, social media and other things are totally disrupting American life. And talks, they talk about that here, we need to talk about those things. There's a, one of the things I asked the members of the board to look at is something called a creepy line. If you have access to Amazon Prime Video, I suggest you view it, it's about an hour and a half. And it talks about what Google is doing in taking information and manipulating it, storing profiles. Everybody kinda smirked, I, maybe, let me just take that back. Some people were surprised at Mr. Fisher's comment regarding, regarding Google and what have you. You need to understand, you are being profiled. Everybody who uses it is being profiled. Our students are being profiled. You as staff, when you use Google, when you use Chromebooks, you're being profiled. There are things that we can band together with to increase the circle of inclusion in trying to stay American education, starting with Riverside, and I would like to be a part of that. But, but we've gotta figure out a common ground, and I would suggest that, and that I will not, I will not ever vote again to approve acquisition of Chromebooks, because it is absolutely the wrong answer. And I would recommend, you may disagree with me, but I'm sure the vast majority of you or many of you have Amazon Prime, I would look at the creepy line and see if it doesn't change your mind.
So I would just like to ask what all this has to do with the social-emotional learning programs that we're using. I'm not exactly sure I'm following this line of thought for myself, like, I'm confused. But I'd like, I'd like to answer a question from Mr. Fisher when he asked about equality and equity, and if I can maybe give an example, because there was an example that struck me, and it meant something to me. So you have three people, and one is five foot, and one is six foot, and one is seven foot, and you have a fence that is eight feet. They all wanna look over the fence, okay? But the person who is seven feet, he only needs, you give everybody a one-foot step, well, one person can now look over the fence and the other two can't. Well, at the end of the day, that's equality, that would be equality. But equity is the fact that I get three steps and now I can see over the fence as much as the guy who was one, needed one step to look over the fence, okay? That is equity. And when I look at equity in our district, and I look at what teachers do in their classrooms, and I've been around for a long time here, and was on, you know, the DLT or whatever that we had here, or I remember talking about the third grade reading guarantee when that, you know, that came out, and how much, how much teachers had to give some students more than others in order to get them to be able to read, is that wrong? That's what we're supposed to do in our classrooms, we're supposed to be reaching students where they are and where they need to be in order to be successful in this thing called life. That's equity. And if somebody has a problem with equity, when you look at it in that term, man, I got a problem with you. Like, at the end of the day, I'm just gonna be honest, like, that is, honestly.
I'm sorry, real quick, I, we just, we have also Hospital 99, so, at half hour.
Okay, so I'd like to make one more statement. So, you said you're confused about the SEL, so maybe I could wrap up what I'm saying with this.
I'm confused about where all this Google, the tracking, like, how all that has to do with us.
Okay, okay, fine, and, so, just to be clear, so everyone here, and anyone watching, and anyone who will ever hear or see this, I think that we have a really strong district in Riverside Local School District. I think we have a lot of very, very good teachers, and I believe we have a lot of good staff and administration. I think we have a very good district, okay? My goal is to make it the gold standard, I think we have work to get there. And, and I believe that the social-emotional learning programs as it continues on would cause us to decline. So that being said, that's an opinion, so that being said, the social-emotional learning program of Responsive Classroom was put out to K through eight and for the training for the teachers therein. Okay, so how is this program being measured? What is the metric? Because as I understand it, teachers can pick and choose, like an a la carte, whatever they want to do or not do. So if a program cannot be measured, it can't be managed, okay? Because you don't have consistency. Who's doing what? This teacher's doing this, this teacher's doing something else. Well, how do you meld that together and measure that? What is the tool, the measurement tool, that we are going to use to measure this program? Okay, so I think that we don't have one right now, I think we're deficient in that. And I think that will cause us to have failure, because if you don't have some consistency, if you can't measure something, you can't measure it, you can't assess whether it's working, not working, or excelling. Okay, so I just wanted to put that out there, I think that it's a program that has unfair requirements of the teachers and of the staff and administration and support. And the as much as getting to know each of the students' families, I'm about 99.9% sure that is not happening. And the as much as, if you know the student this much, well, you see that student every day, and it's impossible to see their families every day. Okay, as much as teaching them or doing the SEL program, as much as academics, well, that's taking away from academics. So I'll wrap it up that way.
I would-
So in my opinion, it should be removed.
I would sort of beg to disagree with you that we don't have measurements, measurements of success in classrooms. We, at our K through eight, we have test scores, and it is my understanding that you go from the district to the building to the teacher-based teams, that they communicate with one another about best practices. And there's lots of data that Dr. Malacher will take about students' test scores, and they have those conversations. Why is this classroom kids doing so much better, for example? And then they talk about, what are you doing in your classroom? And they share, they share those best practices, what are you doing in your classroom that's making, that's making it work for your students? So we do have data, so to say we don't have data on what is working in classrooms and what is not, I think is not accurate.
Well, I'd like to see a report of that data, on the responsive classroom data, you know, through Malacher.
I don't think it's on Responsive Classroom, I think it's just what practices are you doing, what is it? And it could be a bunch of things in combination, it may not be any one thing, but you may listen to another teacher say, "I do this, and I do this, and I do this," well, I do this one, I don't do these other two, maybe I should try them, I don't know. Like, I'm not in a classroom.
Like, this is professional development, it's meant to help them in their classroom to do things better. It's not a curriculum that we're removing, it's not a curriculum that we can keep as one, it's to help make everyone better.
Give them communications, yes.
Well, I'm genuinely interested in that data.
I don't think there is data on-
It's not, it's on the classroom, it's on how the classroom is doing. So I think you're trying to kind of turn what was said, it's on how the classroom is doing, it's on how the teacher groups are doing.
One classroom or all the classroom?
We have, I mean, every classroom takes tests, there are state-required tests, there are reading tests, there's all kinds of tests that kids take that will measure their success, and many times you can use that data to determine, like, what practices is this teacher using, and you have that conversation- And you have that conversation, I have no idea what this teacher may be using. Let's, let's find out what is making that teacher successful.
So is that, could that be written down, so we have a template? I mean, there's, has to be something to measure.
Oh my gosh, there's so much data that they have in the teacher-based teams that they have done. I don't know about that.
So there has to be one way to measure, just like, like two plus two is the same through all the classrooms.
So real quick.
So there has to be a template, a measurement tool we can use to measure the success of the program, and I'd like to see that.
Okay, so we have another little topic to discuss. Can we side that at a curriculum meeting? You guys can explore if there's a way to measure it.
So, so let me, let me just, in conclusion, I, it is, if we are going to have public education thrive, people like Mr. Fisher and I, we need to be, we need to have inclusion in the conversation. We need to work together to figure out how to make it work for everyone. There's, you, you, you know, maybe it was too much information, maybe you just disagreed, but we talk past each other, and Jonathan Haidt, I think, understands why that is. And there are a lot of things going on that The Coddling of the American Mind touches on and is relevant to everything that we do in this district. And I know, I don't know, Mrs. Grassi, if you saw the creepy line? Did you watch the creepy line? I, I would recommend that all of you watch the creepy line, because you may have different opinion on whether or not Google is good for you. You have access to it, it's about an hour and a half, and, and I'm sorry that you didn't watch it, because it may have changed your mind as well. And I provided that, you know, two weeks ago. It is, it is important, we have got to come together. We, I am flashing red, because we are in a, in a dangerous situation. We need to work together to recover. I want to be a part of that. I'm not being, I, I, I am, I'm trying to bring things forward that I don't believe you see. And it is important that we have lights flashing in all directions, so that we can see what's going on. I am dedicated to Riverside, I want it to succeed. We have got to work together. Thank you.
So, real quick, just to close this conversation, the question that was asked.
Let's talk afterwards, let's talk afterwards.
So, real quick, the question that was asked of the board was to say, are we gonna remove responsive classroom professional development? I can say that my, my, where I stand right now is that we continue to use it and let the teachers use schools. I agree. I would like to see it continued in classroom.
Are we gonna take a vote?
There's really nothing to vote on?
Sure there is. We'd like to hear you vote.
We just said, we would like to keep responsive classroom.
So then put it to a vote, put it on the record.
It's not, it's not.
Vote, there's a declaration, there's a declaration.
Vote on it.
There is nothing to vote on.
What are you hiding from? Vote on it, put it on the record.
Would you please be quiet? Please, thank you.
Public participation is over, and we're moving on to the next subject of House Bill 99. Our teachers.
It's over, man, it's over.
It's over.
I mean, it's over.
It's one of those, yeah, it's a side issue.
Yes. Yes.
So you voted then.
The next question was, should we change our policy to allow school employees to carry a gun, which was signed into by Governor DeWine? I think Dr. Kales, you have had some conversations, you can just provide us some information from the teachers' union.
I received, and I've forwarded to the boards, two emails that represent the stance from the other way, the teacher union, and also OCS, the Association of Public School Employees, the State Department of Arms, National Security Department, National Security and Public Utilities, and both have suggested that they will not support having our staff bringing weapons or guns in schools for the purpose of protection. I also asked other school districts what they're doing too. Doesn't seem like any school districts, at least in the immediate area, are looking to arm their teachers and their families.
I, I know, I had a chance, I spoke to some officers that I know. One of their main concerns, which I had not originally had, so I'm glad I talked to them, was, when you have somebody who is not in uniform, walking around a school with a gun, a very inactive situation, they said it's very hard to understand who's the shooter, who's not the shooter, you know, what is going on. And I thought that was something very valid. I personally hadn't thought of, and anybody that I spoke to also, kind of just understanding their opinions or not in favor of it.
I would like to make a recommendation or suggestions to the board as well, from what you've said, and I want to ask you, is the fact that we, all of us feel so strongly about school security and safety, that maybe we can work with the Sheriff's Department to see if we can get a deputy in each one of our schools. Right now, we have one SRO, soon we have two. They have different training than some of the deputies that work at the door here. We have also a deputy that will move. But with the new SRO, talking to the Sheriff's Department, like, to get the SRO into some of our elementary schools as well. With that being said, our school district is pretty large, and with the way things are going in this country in terms of the frequency of these file max, that I believe we should pursue putting a deputy in each of the schools. One of the things the board also did was we increased the pay for the person at the door, also for hiring them on our books, not on the Sheriff's Department, and also providing benefits, which make this a little bit more appealing than what it has been since nineteen ninety-eight, when we started having the person work outside the door. There are other things we're doing as well, I just spoke to a couple of board members, is trying to shore up some of our safety protocols. On August ninth, we got an architectural firm coming in to walk some of the buildings that we think need attention, one being Riverside, the epic century, also Malrich, and Buckeye, and looking at what those facilities.
And you have a move.
And, well, you have a move too, well, that one's a little bit easier, we're talking about, with that, Mr. Fisher, and we're talking about that, but also it'll be, nobody else will have a deputy there, but we'll be having security and things like that. And, but, but I'm just gonna have to suggest, like I said before, it's not, it's not that we don't believe we need security to do, but there's so many other things that happen in school that one might think that having many weapons in the school, even if it's by a person that has been trained, although I do think that twenty-four hours, twenty, yeah, twenty-four hours is not enough. I believe that there's some things that could happen, regrettably, in this in the school just because of the proximity and the number of people.
So I have some comments as well, I mean. So I, I called down to OSBA and spoke to a gentleman by the name of Will Schwartz, apparently part of security, asked him, you know, he knew how many districts already had, you know, basically armed teachers. He did not have that information, but he was able to forward to me some information on districts that do have armed, armed teachers. The first district I called does not match our profile, and they were.
Sorry, can I?
Sure.
Our, our teachers and or staff.
Sure. Okay, that's, that's.
It's not just teachers.
That's a, that's a fair correction. So that's, it's armed personnel in the, in the school is a better way of saying it, thank you.
Well, I'm telling you, sometimes the teachers say, look, it's all on us, and it's not.
It's not, you're, you're, that's a, that's a great correction, thank you. So, so armed, armed employees in the school, how about that? Okay? So, so, so not our profile, small district, we're all concerned about getting response time thirty-plus minutes. They, they, it made sense, in my opinion, right? In that, in that circumstance. Talked to another district that pretty well matches our profile. Thirty-seven hundred students, seven different buildings, more of a suburban setting than a rural setting. And, and what they did was, was, I thought, unique, which, which is a derivation, is derivative of, of what, what we have been talking about. They have a, an emergency response team, and, and what they do is, the only, the only person who knows all the members, the members know who they are, the only person outside of the response team that, that knows who they are is the superintendent. Nobody, the board members don't know, nobody else knows. What they do is they're not, they are not armed. Throughout each of the buildings, there are bio safes, bio-controlled safes. So a thumbprint, I don't know what it is, but it's some bio, biometric that opens the safe. In that safe are the weapons that would be used in such a scenario. And as, as was brought up, how do you differentiate between, you know, good actors and bad actors in such a situation? In, in that safe as well is, is our vest, the let's say vest, that are, that have some, some armor on it to identify them as, as good guys. And in addition to that, they do regular training with their local police department on a consistent basis. So it is, it is a different, there's nobody walking around constantly with, with a weapon, but they, they have that as a, as a backup. And this is my background, is IT, information technology, and project management. And what do you do with security in a system? You do it in layers. You, you might have a password up front, but you wanna get to another module, you need a card with a chip. You wanna get to another module further in, you do biometric. You have it in layers. You may all, we're all familiar with Evolve? There, there's no fail-safe, right? We had armed, there were armed personnel outside that door, outside that classroom for an hour before they acted. By then, it was clearly too late. There's no, if, there is no way to guarantee safety. But what if, what if there was a biometric safe in that, in that classroom? Maybe the outcome would have been slightly different, would have been completely different. The, the other thing in Heartland, there's a, which happened a number of years ago down in Florida, the, the SRO is, is, has been indicted and is actually on trial for his, for potential dereliction of duty. There, there is no outcome, so we don't know what the, what the, the status is. But, but I, security in layers is something I think we need to consider. And not walking, you know, having kind of a hybrid of, of having availability, but not necessarily being armed throughout the day, I think is something we need to consider. And I guarantee you, in a, in a hot situation, each of you, regardless of your opinion of what, of this, would certainly wish that, that you had, that somebody near you was armed. So, so in that, in the heat of the moment, this is, it's, it's, it's an abstract thought today. So I think we know where we are, but I throw that out there, because, because having security in layers makes sense, in my opinion, and needs to be, have further discussion.
I agree. Additional discussion, we, what can we do to improve this school's security? Like, so the walkthrough and understanding, if there's any suggestions and where they would start, I think is absolutely appropriate.
So I would add a similar comment to what Mr. Hack said. If the person in the classroom had been armed with a firearm, the question, rhetorical question is, would more students have died or fewer students have died? I think we all know the answer to that, because if someone had a deterrent in that room, at the very least, even if the person was totally freaked out and couldn't follow their training very well, just pulled out that gun and shot towards the perpetrator, that perpetrator, almost in every situation, would have fled, at least from that scene. And, and so I put that out there, and then what Mr. Hack said, I think makes a lot of sense for people that are fearing, that, a lot of people really fear that guns are walking around in a building. Having them locked up in a safe and biometrically available is not immediate. The recent case in Indiana where a guy pulled out a gun, started shooting into a crowd of people, and someone who had a concealed carry, within fifteen seconds, pulled that gun, because they had it on the, on their person, and killed that perpetrator, and saved a lot of lives. Okay, so if we were in a no-gun zone, a lot of people would have died. And, and so this is a separate item, you may not agree with this, I'm just gonna put it out there. I've heard the studies, and since we've been giving kids, people psychotropic drugs, basically starting in about the eighties, we know that it has a negative effect on the brain, and a certain number of people lose their minds literally. And now we're seeing a lot of this. When we go back, how far do you wanna go back? Cowboys and Indians, or whatever, people were carrying guns everywhere, we didn't have this problem. But I don't know if you would tie it together, I think there's a little bit of a link with the drugs that we're giving kids, and, and I think that it changes people's brains in certain instances, and sometimes people can't handle it, and they literally lose their minds and do crazy things. So anyway, it's, it's, we're in an environment where that's not gonna change. And so what, how do we respond? How do, how do we protect the kids? And then our, and ourselves? And, and so I just put that out there as, as a proponent of at least some additional safety measures. And I think that was a good idea.
Dr. Kales, let me make sure I understand this correctly. So in order, in order to have this in our schools, we would have to vote on it as a board to approve that amongst many other things. Usually as a board, we don't take that up for consideration unless the administration is a proponent of that, or somebody from the board requests, and there has to be like two people that want to put that on the agenda. So as I'm understanding it, you would prefer as the administration not to have the board vote on that?
Correct.
And the staff, right? But at this point in time, the two board members would like to have that. They could do so, but then we would have to vote. So right now, we don't have it, because we're not voting.
All the areas of schools, I believe, so, I don't know for sure, but the areas of schools aren't exercising any type of resolution at all, because it's just, it's just, it's a policy of weapons at school. I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think, I don't know, if you talked to them, it said it was recommended that the resolution regarding not exercising the authority under House Bill 99 be approved. I don't know if they actually do that. Knowledge, in fact, that they should be, that, that is out there, we're saying not exercising.
I believe it's a requirement from, from the bill itself, that if you do approve it, that you have to make a public announcement. I believe it is neutral, it says nothing about not doing it.
I, I think the guidelines were sent to us on June twenty-second from DM, our, our group. We have six items to consider with this House Bill 99. I got it here.
Yeah, the way I understood it, with talking to Dr. Palmer, Mr. McIntyre also, the only thing we need to do is if we want to put a resolution onto a document, that's when we put it on. If not, we're just not changing anything.
I think your other conversation's all, that's a good answer.
So we're not making any changes at this point. So. I don't have to bring this special, this board session to a close, perhaps?
It's kind of one, we just take a recess and start.
We have five minutes, if anybody needs to take a quick break, before we actually start our regular board meeting at seven.